Pursuant to section eighty-four dash fourteen twelve of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is in the board meeting room on the north wall. The purpose of the meeting is to approve resolution twenty-one dash zero one five recommending face coverings to preserve public health and protect the district's students, employees, families, and visitors. Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Cassidy?
Here.
Erdnberger?
Here.
Head?
Present.
Holman?
Present.
Crackey? Smith?
Here.
Snipes?
Present.
Snow? Tealyn?
Here.
Seven, present.
Thank you. We did hear from Mrs. Crackey in that she is intending on joining the meeting but is running a little bit late, and we have not yet heard from Mr. Snow. Any discussion? Mr. Ray? No discussion, no? Perfect, okay, perfect. All righty, moving on to public comment and recognition.
In keeping with the provisions of policy eight, eighty-three twenty, and in order to provide all of those who timely submitted their request to be heard forms with the opportunity to speak, I move to suspend policy eighty-three forty-six in part as follows. Extend the maximum duration of the public, excuse me, of the public comment session from one hour until all speakers who timely submitted their request to be heard forms have been heard from and to reduce the maximum permitted duration for individual speakers from five minutes to three minutes for tonight's meeting only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it has been moved by Mrs. Erdnberger and seconded by Mr. Smith to provide all those who timely submitted their request to be heard forms with the opportunity to speak, to suspend policy eighty-three forty-six, to extend the duration of the public comment session from a maximum of hours needed, and to reduce the five-minute time limit to three minutes. Any discussion? Mr. Head?
Yeah, Vice President Erdnberger, thank you for the motion. I'll be voting no. I don't think we should be cutting the length of comment down from five to three.
Fair enough, Dr. Mr. Head. I'm mostly doing it for the benefit of the people at the end of the line who will otherwise have to sit around for a long time, so that's why I was cutting it to three minutes, but I appreciate your statement.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, just as, you know, someone who's been, been in the testifying seat before, I know it's, when you've prepared for five minutes, it's difficult to all of a sudden cut to three and figure out what you're gonna say and not, so.
Definitely agree.
Any further discussion?
May I ask, do we know how many forms we have?
Yes, we do.
Can you, can you, sure, do you have a number?
We have twenty-two forms turned in.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Ray?
Erdnberger?
Aye.
Head?
No.
Holman?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Snipes?
Aye.
Tealyn?
Aye.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Six aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have twenty-two speakers who have submitted the request to speak forms. The board has adopted policy eighty-three forty-six, which provides public comment for a period for, we've changed the amendment to include the maximum amount of time that is needed for all speakers to speak for three minutes. That same policy limits individual speakers to three minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit. Mr. Lay will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have thirty seconds remaining. Given the number of speakers, we ask that to the extent you're able, keep your comments brief so that we can hear from as many of you as possible in the allotted time. If you're in need of an interpreter, please let Mr. Ray know and one will be provided for you. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they've come to speak about. We ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from any applause or other outbursts during the presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray. He will assist us in looking into those types of specifics for you. If you do not get an opportunity to speak and would like to submit any written commentary, please provide it to Mr. Ray. He will make sure that each member of the board gets a copy. As a reminder, with the recent passage of L B eighty-three by the Nebraska Legislature, the Board of Education is legally obligated to require any member of the public desiring to address the board to identify him or herself, including an address and the name of any organization you may represent. As a result, please state and spell your first and last name, state your current address, and let us know if you are here representing any particular organizations before you begin your public comment. In addition, we ask that you remain seated until called to the podium. Please remain at the podium and do not approach the board table. If you have materials to distribute, please let me know and Mr. Ray will come and get them from you. It is now six-thirty-six P M., and our first speaker is Justin Riddle.
Good evening. My name is Justin Riddle. My address is sixteen four twenty-two Patrick Ave. in Omaha. Oh, that's J U S T I N R I D D L E. So, nice change from last time. We've got an American flag that we could have done the pledge allegiance to, we did last time, but to no flag. Freedom of speech hasn't yet been violated, but I'm first, so we'll see what happens. We haven't been told we can't use audio or visual aids for some general, yet unknown reason, and no one's been physically removed for not stating their address without clarification of a misquoted policy. But there's something better. Do you see it? It's the community. It's the people you represent, all here for the right reason, their own. We don't all have to agree, but they're here, and that's gonna make a big difference in how things go moving forward, and it's gonna grow each and every time. I wanted to have a great speech for tonight, but instead I have the following. Masks are unsanitary, especially on kids who are younger and have snot running down their face. It will cause more bacteria to be harbored. Kids can stick Legos in small pieces in mouths and the teachers won't know if it's got a mask. They also risk choking on items that's not visible. These are things from my daughter, who works at a medical facility here in Nebraska. Something more important. My friend with me tonight was suspended to remote school for not putting his mask up quick enough between bites last year for the rest of the semester. For not putting his mask, no. His proximity, according to everyone, was about twenty-five feet, and as far as they were concerned, that was a game he was playing. He had ten minutes to eat of his thirty-minute lunch. Anything beyond that was totally unacceptable. Now, are we suggesting that we don't have a remote option? People must wear masks if they ate their, what, so what do they do then? Are they going into a whole new curriculum if they have to go remote because they didn't put their mask up quick enough between bites? Because we know it's a different curriculum for remote, that's why you guys won't do it. For all the schools individually in their classrooms, this information's out there.
Thirty seconds.
Hopefully, people will show up. Hopefully, people will stand up, and hopefully, some of you will stand up and retain your positions next time, but this is a, probably the biggest decision you'll ever make in the, in the coming few months, probably the others, because we won't see crises like this too often.
Next, we have Dr. Sharon Stolman.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me a chance to speak. Hi, I'm Dr. Sharon Stolman, S H A R O N Stolman, S T O O L M A N, two oh four North Fifty-second Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm currently a pediatric hospitalist at Children's Hospital Medical Center here, and so I, through this pandemic, have cared for children with COVID, newborns to teenagers with COVID. I also am a parent of school-aged children and experience the trouble and the difficulties of remote and virtual learning for kids with different aptitudes and learning disabilities. So, as both a parent and a pediatrician, I would ask that we strongly consider a mask mandate for all children in the building and have transparency with the vaccination status of the teachers that are teaching those children. I, I'm very nervous for what's coming. I've talked to my colleagues in Arkansas who have experienced an extreme burden of COVID on their pediatric population in the last week and have placed children on heart-lung bypass and are doing very experimental therapies to try to save children from COVID. And I know that there are other colleagues watching stories of other colleagues in Louisiana and Mississippi, and I would just hope that we would learn from those states that have opened their schools without mask mandates in Georgia and Texas and within two weeks already had to either close or find a virtual curriculum. That we really look that this is not our grandparents' COVID from last year. The Delta variant is different. It clearly has a different impact and affinity on children and the unvaccinated, and my worry is that our healthcare system is already very stretched and that we will struggle to be able to handle that here and have to transfer kids out, but also looking at the mental health of our teenagers who were out of the classroom last year, that return to virtual-
One minute.
-has devastating impact on them. And so my hope is that we can start the year off ahead of things, wear masks until we can get ahead of this Delta variation, increase our vaccination status in our faculty, because we know that if the adults around these young children that can't be vaccinated are vaccinated, that will help. And then, as the FDA approves the vaccine this fall and we get approval for the younger age, we can discuss things like removing masks for the next semester.
Thirty seconds.
So I appreciate you taking this time to be thoughtful in the protection of our children, especially the ones who cannot be vaccinated. Thank you.
Next, we have Kari Simonson.
I'm Dr. Kari Simonson, K A R I S I M O N S E N, and together with Dr. Mel St. Germain, we're on the same forum for you, M E L S T G E R M A I N. I serve as the pediatrician in chief at Children's Hospital and Medical Center and the chair of the Department of Pediatrics at U N M C., and I wanted to discuss with all of you here tonight how important it is that we get our kids back to learning safely. We're in the middle of a pandemic. We've learned a lot since last year, but we're not at the end of it yet. One of the things that we can do to keep kids in school and learning is to continue to encourage vaccination for all for whom it's eligible. Right now, that's twelve and up, and so that does include our staff and our adolescents in school. Right now, our youngest kids, our elementary and preschoolers, are not yet eligible for vaccines, and so we feel very strongly that continuing to use masks in school settings is imperative at this point in time. We need to keep kids safe in-person, learning, and one of the ways we can do that is to use masks while they're in school.
Thanks, and I am the vice president and medical director of Children's Physicians. I'm also the current president of the Nebraska Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics. Both of those organizations, along with the CDC, in the last three-ish weeks have put out strong recommendations for continued masking for kids and staff as they go back to school in the fall. We have a lot of great data from last year that showed that in schools where they were able to keep masks, they were able to stay in school, they had less remote learning in those districts and in those schools, and the kids had better outcomes. And the data's very clear that masks are safe, that they are effective at preventing COVID disease. Thank you.
Will you both please share your addresses?
Mine is nine-two-two South One Hundred Thirteenth Street, Omaha.
So sorry. One-eight-one-seven-five Mayberry Street.
Thank you so much, and my apologies for mispronouncing your name as well.
Thank you.
Next, we have Rachel Kolb.
Hi, Rachel Kolb, R A C H E L K O L B as in boy, and my address is sixteen seventeen North Fifty-ninth Street in Omaha. Thank you for the chance to speak today. I want my children in school, in person, with their peers and their teachers. I think we all agree this is the ideal situation. Our best chance for that to happen is if we can keep community spread in check, and universal masking in schools is a crucial part of reducing the spread. According to the Douglas County COVID dashboard, only twelve percent of kids ages twelve to fifteen have even one dose of the vaccine. Since the under-twelve crowd isn't even eligible to receive the vaccine, the percentage of vaccinated OPS students is incredibly low. The CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, U N M C., the Douglas County Health Director, the Omaha Education Board of Directors are just some of the respected professional organizations who have officially called for universal masking in schools. We can do this small thing. It isn't that hard. I wear one to work for eight hours a day. Last year, I picked up kids up from two different schools. I watched as the students poured out the doors at dismissal. They didn't rip their masks off. In fact, most of them left them on as they got in their cars or walked home. Our kids can handle this. Every year, I receive an updated code of conduct from each school that my children attend. I don't recall there ever being an uproar by parents that the school can't tell my kid what to do. The handbook is full of rules. They have dress codes, they aren't allowed to wear just anything they want, they're even told to pull their pants up. In order to attend school in Nebraska, children are required to be vaccinated against diphtheria, tetanus, pertussis, polio, measles, mumps, rubella, hepatitis B, and chicken pox. Rules all put in place for the safety of our community. This is nothing new. As a civilized society, we all follow all kinds of rules and regulations-
One minute.
...that are put in place for the common good. My neighbor can't throw all their trash in their backyard because it would turn into a health hazard. They aren't allowed to do it, even though it's their property. We are required to wear seat belts, to drive a certain speed, to take our shoes off at the airport, to mow our lawns. We all follow rules because we are members of a community. If we could focus on the common good and care for our neighbors, maybe we could show our kids that sometimes it's more important to care about others than for our individual liberties.
Thirty seconds.
They are depending on us to be the example. Let's be decent humans, care about each other, and please, let's keep them in school. Thank you.
Next, we have John Koziel.
I'm sorry? John Koziel, J O H N K O Z I O L, thirty-eight fourteen V Street, Omaha. I just wanted to say thanks for letting me speak. I do respect and value everyone's opinion. One of the biggest things I noticed was, like, we all come together, but it's kind of divided. You have, like, masked people on one side, unmasked on another side, and I think that's our community supposed to- And I think that our community is supposed to come together. I also think it's the rights of the parents to make a decision that directly affects the health and well-being of their children. I think that every parent should have the decision to make the choice. And that was all. Thank you.
Next, we have Jacinta Weber.
Good evening. Hello. Good evening. Jacinta Weber, J-A-C-I-N-T-A-W-E-B-E-R, eight-four-zero-five Wyoming Street in Omaha. I'm a mother of two elementary children at Springville. I'm also a nurse. And I understand you guys are getting lots of recommendations from health officials, CDC, things like that. I believe it needs to stay a recommendation. I don't think it should be mandatory. I think any health decision should be up to me to decide for my child. I just want the choice. I'm tired of all this, you know? I want the kids to be in school, but it needs to be a choice whether to put a mask on their face. And it is a big deal. The kids aren't walking around like, oh, it's no big deal. It's fine. They hate it. They cry. They hate it. They can't breathe appropriately. They go in the bathroom stall, close the door, and pull it down so they can get a break. It's not okay. I'm not okay with it. I don't... Just want a choice. I don't think that's too much to ask. Thank you.
If you can please refrain from applause, that would be helpful. Thank you very much. Next, we have Whitney Weeks.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Whitney Weeks, W-H-I-T-N-E-Y-W-E-E-K-S. My address is six-two-six-nine Woolworth Avenue. Good evening, board. My name is Whitney Weeks, and I was born and raised in Omaha, a city that I love and a city that I love to serve. From a Columbian Cobra to a Brevet Bulldog and a graduate of Burke High, I'm a product of the Omaha Public Schools. My oldest child will be starting kindergarten at Belle Ryan Elementary this fall, so I'm excited to officially be connected with OPS Schools District once again. Despite not having a school-aged child until now, I've been involved very closely with kids that attend OPS schools for some time. For five years, I've been involved with mentoring. For the last four years, I've been involved with neighborhood outreach at my church in and around the Walnut Hill neighborhood, where we meet every Wednesday night. For the last three years, I've been taking those kids fishing every Thursday in the summertime at Benson Park. For the last two years, I've been working with a team at my church to start a mentoring program, and we have successfully matched twenty-plus kids with mentors. This summer, my wife and I put on a soccer league for young kids at Walnut Hill, totally free of charge for the neighborhood kids. I bring this all up because despite just now having a child at OPS, these kids that I deeply care about and I've been blessed to get to know in the community have almost entirely been students in this school district. I stand up here not just for my family, but for all these kids that I care about. So with that said, I have a request. My request to the board is quite simple. And before I get to that request, I want to thank each and every one of you on this board for serving this city and this school district. This has easily been one of the most difficult one-and-a-half years to serve on this board. I know each of you ran for office to protect our kids. Faced with near impossible decisions, I know many of you have faced attacks from upset parents, have likely felt the pressure that no matter what choice you make, you're going to make a lot of people very upset. So for being up here and making the difficult decisions, I want to thank you. Now, as for the request, again, my request is really quite simple. Let's be consistent. Let's be consistent. It seems like such an easy request, but if we look to the elite politicians throughout our country, it is anything but. Over the course of the last year, we have had Democratic politicians do interviews and state, "I would never trust a Trump vaccine," to now shaming people for not trusting the same vaccine. We have had Republican politicians praising the Trump vaccine who suddenly switched to doubting at once Biden became elected. To be frank, we are in a country that is run by inconsistency and hypocrisy. But here in Omaha, let's be different. In the Omaha Public Schools, let's be different. Let's be consistent. Consistency requires informed decisions based on science and data, not based on emotions or what the politician we voted for is saying. As difficult as this COVID nightmare has been, we have been blessed that there is one thing that has been consistent. Our children have been at a low risk of being hospitalized from COVID-19. Now, without a doubt, this meeting is being held because at this time, we are seeing near-record numbers of hospitalizations in children with COVID. In early January, we set a record with one thousand five hundred nineteen children needing to be hospitalized. This week, we nearly matched it with one thousand five hundred and twelve. Now, this board, I assume, has mostly made up your minds on if they are going to vote for mask requirements. My hunch is that most of you go along with the other school districts in the area that have already decided to require masks for kids. So whether my speech gets you to change your vote, or you decide to vote the same way you planned, all I ask is that you remain consistent throughout your time on the board. Now, the majority of you that served on this board for three-plus years, so for those of you that are planning to vote for masks at the end of this meeting, then you will be inconsistent. To my knowledge, no special meeting was held, and none of you voted to require masks for children during the flu season of two thousand nineteen-twenty, when in
That's time.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next, we have Kay Karn. Excuse me, sir. All right, we have to be consistent with the vote. Sir, please, can you please help? Please refrain from your applause, or you will be asked to leave as well. Thank you. Next, we have Kay Karn. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, board, for taking my comments today. My name is Kay Karn, K-A-Y-C-A-R-N-E, one-four-three-zero-five White Deer Lane. I'm a parent of three OPS students, and I strongly support masks right now. Children under twelve have not had the opportunity to be vaccinated, and I would like to see masks for that age group until vaccination is both available and the time has passed for students to have the opportunity to be vaccinated. I think we need mandatory masks for all of our schools right now until the Delta wave has passed. The CDC recommends masks for K-through-twelve schools. The American Academy of Pediatrics recommends masks for K-through-twelve schools. The Douglas County Health Director recommends masks. Many, many doctors, like the ones who have spoke here tonight, have explained to us why masks are recommended and some of the dangers our children will face if they are to contract COVID. So as other mothers have said, OPS takes many other steps to keep our kids healthy and safe, from vaccination requirements for other diseases to background checks for teachers and parent volunteers. There are all sorts of policies and procedures in place to keep our children safe and healthy and in school and being educated. So I ask you, please approve mandatory masks for all right now, and please keep that mandate in effect for twelve-and-under students, at least until they've had a chance to be vaccinated. Thank you.
Next, we have Michelle Cavanagh.
Good evening. Hello. Michelle, M-I-C-H-E-L-L-E, Cavanagh, C-A-V-A-N-A-U-G-H, twenty-six-zero-five North Ninety-eighth Street. I come before you today as a mom to a daughter going into first grade. I'm also a nurse working in a COVID ICU. This last year has been one of the hardest in my life. Watching so many people die from a single cause has been heart-wrenching. The only positive thing about this pandemic is that it was sparing children. Then Delta hit. The Delta variant is not sparing our children. Pediatric intensive care units are treating more children from COVID than ever before. Our southern states are seeing this now. A pediatric physician in Louisiana, whose pediatric ICU is full, said, and I quote, "It is scary, especially for kids who don't fully understand what's going on. They're air-hungry, struggling for breath, and it's scary. You have an illness, the fear, they can't breathe. They're isolated. That's hard for anyone to understand, but can you imagine what it's like for a child?" Arkansas, twenty-three pediatric patients, ten in the ICU, five of them on life support. Missouri, twenty children needing hospital beds the first week of August. Texas, more than thirty children hospitalized. This is even before schools open. It is our responsibility to take this data and use it as a cautionary tale before this happens here. While the vaccine is working to protect people from being on a ventilator and death, studies are showing that even those on the vaccine can spread COVID with this Delta variant. This means that without masks, even our educators who have been vaccinated can spread this to our children. Being six years old, my child does not have the choice to be vaccinated. Her only way of protecting herself is with a mask. Children cannot comprehend what is going on in the world right now or their risk. The decision of whether or not to wear a mask should not be left up to them. Studies have shown that the Delta variant spreads much easier.
One minute.
In the same environment, Delta would spread from one person to four and can dominate quickly. So what does this mean for our classrooms? I am terrified to send my child to school. Without masks, I feel like I am sending her to get COVID. Maybe she will get cold lice symptoms. Maybe she will end up on life support. A gamble I'm not willing to risk, and neither should you. This last year, when numbers were the same, we were wearing masks. Now we have a variant that's spreading even easier. At the end of the day, what I say here shouldn't matter. We should listen to the experts, the CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, physicians, some of whom are here today, and infectious disease doctors who are all recommending our kids wear masks. If the health and safety of our children is top priority, please prioritize those children that can't be vaccinated. Let's be proactive and not reactive once children start getting sick. Thank you.
Next, we have Brenda Nickel.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Brenda Nickel, B-R-E-N-D-A-N-I-C-K-O-L. My address is five-two-zero-three California Street. I'm a current OPS member. I've reached out to you all via email and shared some information, so I'm pleased to be here in person to support the resolution. My favorite thing about the resolution are the first two words, "Staff recommends." Priority number two is your staff. Let's listen to them. But I'll talk to you as a parent. But first, I want to let you know that I come from a family of public school teachers. From my grandmother spending a career in a one-room schoolhouse in North Dakota to aunts, uncles, cousins, and my sister, my family members currently work at public schools in four states. I myself was a preschool teacher and intended to follow in my family's footsteps. But then I discovered public health in nineteen ninety-nine. I've been at this for a while. It was love at first sight because the idea of prevention is appealing to me. But it's not just me. We have that quote, you know, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure" for a reason. Because prevention will always make more sense. Always. From an economic standpoint, quality-of-life standpoint, equity standpoint, literally any metric that you want to choose, preventing something from happening will always make more sense than waiting to react. I'm sharing some of my background because I think I'm a rare person in this room who has equal parts expertise in public health and education. And as a former board member at the Montessori Co-op School in Benson, I was in charge of all of our COVID protocols over this entire pandemic. Every single decision, every protocol. I understand the data. I understand the tools that we have at our disposal. I understand what it takes in each classroom to make this work. I can tell you without a hesitation that because medical exemptions are possible, there are no valid reasons to not require masks in school. I say valid because any reason related to safety can be refuted with accurate and current science. Any other reason is about preference and comfort. And frankly, preference and comfort are not more important than my child's life. Masks are safe. They are effective. And if we want our kids in school, we need to go with prevention,
Thirty seconds.
which masks allow us to do. And we've learned that kids are able to wear masks as long as their trusted adults are encouraging them to do so and modeling by example. Finally, I agree. We've been lucky so far. By and large, this pandemic has spared our kids' lives. But if we don't continue to use every tool in our toolbox, masks, vaccines, testing, isolation, we're going to keep giving this virus a chance to evolve, and we won't continue to be so lucky. We've been lucky, believe it or not.
Next, we have Jason Speck. I apologize if I mispronounced your last name. Good evening.
Good evening. Jason Speck, J-A-S-O-N-S-V-E-C, one-six-four-seven-five Bridette Street. Thank you for allowing me to stand up here in front of you today. I'm against the mask mandate. I think it should be an option. To me, the parent, I have always been against wearing the mask, but I've always worn it up until recently. I had my lung collapse, and ever since then, I've been short of breath. And I have three kids, two of which have asthma. And that really has opened up to my eyes, not just to my kids, but also the other kids out there that have asthma. It's hard to breathe then. I had a hard time before, but now, it wants to drop me to my knees just because I'm running out of breath. And I'm hearing a lot of people saying that they, you know, they feel that they should have the mask. A lot of people are saying they shouldn't have the mask. And that's everyone's opinion. It should be that when it comes to the school, you know? Your opinion. If you want your kids to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you don't want your kids to wear a mask, they should be able to not wear a mask. Shouldn't be a mandate. It should be what you want to be, want it to be. And that's all I can think of right now. Thank you.
Next, we have Donna Polk. Welcome.
Thank you and good evening. Donna D-O-N-N-A Polk, P-O-L-K. My address is thirty-five-twenty-six North One Hundred and Fourth Avenue here in Omaha. I am the CEO of Nebraska Urban Indian Health Coalition, and I am representing them and myself tonight. We have tested people for COVID-19. We have provided vaccine to over four hundred individuals. I am here in support of the resolution, recommending face coverings for students, staff, families, and visitors. I am not sure there is anything I can say to change the mind of individuals who don't share my concern about children or the health status of individuals who will transport children on buses, in vans, prepare their meals in the cafeteria, or teach them in the classroom. I am risking my health to be here tonight. I'm a cancer patient at the Buffett Cancer Center. I'm old. I'm overweight. But this issue is important enough to me to be this, to share this space with people who do not mask up, who don't think that they could risk anyone's health, including their own. So again, I ask that you support the resolution. Thank you.
Next, we have Molly Davies.
Good evening. Hello. Molly Davies, D-A-V-I-E-S, twenty-three-zero-five South Thirty-fifth Avenue, six-eight-one-zero-five. I am entering my twenty-first year as an educator, and they have not all been in OPS. I left Catholic education because I care deeply about education as a human right. And I will never again present a worldview to a child that makes them feel like they are limited or less, like they are restricted or unable because of who they are. Today, I am proud to be an OPS teacher and a parent because our students are known, seen, loved, and valued. And I work to make sure that is true in my current teaching position to the best of my ability. Today, I ask you to require masking. I won't waste anyone's time with why. There are clearly more intelligent people that can present that case to you. I will only say that I have actively encouraged some vulnerable teachers and parents, teachers and parents who cannot be vaccinated because they are contraindicated for the vaccine not to attend tonight. And I'm concerned about health. I'm concerned about safety. I'm concerned about your safety. And for those watching, I bet that the members of the Board of Education have received an enormous amount of email for and against, but also for masking. And if there is a perbonderance of speakers tonight that are anti-masking, I'm sure that that has happened and that that is something that can be counted and measured. I think we engage in very serious danger when we represent ourselves as caring about something that we are not willing to engage bravely because our young people see through all of those holes. They are not beholden to our politics. They only smell our hypocrisy. Either we protect them and we love them, or we desert them. And how sad if that happens for loud politics. Once again, in my teaching career, folks who are accusing us
One minute.
of politicizing our jobs are hyper-politicizing our jobs. are hyper-politicizing our jobs. We don't. We don't indoctrinate anyone. We present information. We encourage dialogue. We develop skills. We care for children. Our jobs are a mission. They are a mission to make sure children are safe. They are a mission to make sure they learn to read, to write, to speak, to listen, to study, to think, and to care. It's a mission to make sure they can identify cause and effect, fact and opinion, messy history, great inspiration, and help them understand that we are all full of imperfections. Please require masking.
Next, we have Sarah Smolten.
Hi there.
Good evening.
My name is Sarah Smolten, S-A-R-A-H. Smolten is S-M-O-L-E-N. I live at 315 Spring Street here in Omaha. I have a student who is entering second grade this year, and over the weekend, we talked about the possibility of him having to wear a mask again. It was very simple. We talked about the Delta variant. We talked about how vaccines work, how the virus is spread, all of those things. And when he had all the information, he said, "I want to wear a mask because I want to be healthy." And I think it is that easy. If my seven-year-old can understand it, then I think we all can. They were fine wearing masks. I taught seventh grade last year. Every kid did a great job keeping their masks on. They were even hesitant to take them off, even outside. So the kids are doing well. They're handling this like champions, and I think they can handle this again until we're all safe. Thank you.
Next, we have Larry Store.
Good evening. Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha. 68132. You're one of the local elected bodies that I am going to send a letter to, an email either late tonight or tomorrow, that doesn't seem to be recognizing any longer the Pledge of Allegiance, nor the... Oh, I think that Open Meetings Act posted back there to the citizens. You've taken upon yourself to change the rules. I was on your website today, and I've read some of your old rules that haven't been... Actually, number one, citizen comments should not be talking on the agenda item. That's been changed just recently, but without public notice about that. So my email is going to be about the unreasonable use of the word, number one, reasonable rules, and interpretation of the Open Meetings Act by elected bodies such as yourself to suit yourself and to limit the citizens. Input, the citizens' right, the citizens' First Amendment right, the citizens petitioning their government. This is all guaranteed to us all, every one of us, the citizens in the Constitution of the United States. So you, in fact, are setting in violation of the Constitution and in violation of the state constitution, which calls me the elector. You will make no special laws, it says in there. This mask ordinance is a special law. Anti-constitutional, so think it over and vote against it. I have been to most of these bodies. The other things that you are changing that is not like the other bodies is you are calling us out for clapping. Other bodies don't say a thing. Other bodies let them raise their fists in the air, let them yell at you, let them accuse the police of murder. Don't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Other bodies let that happen. You're not supposed to. Some do, some don't. So you're not applying them across the board, and I am going to push for an across-the-board interpretation by the Attorney General and the Douglas County Attorney to give you guys a lesson on what that is for. I had a private conversation one time with Don Klein. It was at a public meeting. And I asked him, "Who is the Open Meetings Act for?" The implication from him is it is for the citizen, not for you, to manipulate us. And this mask ordinance, vote against it, please. That's time. Okay.
Next, we have Justin Lowndes. Justin Lowndes. I will ask security to please remove anybody that continues to interrupt the meeting by applauding when I've asked two different times already.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Lowndes.
No, you are fine. My name is Justin Lowndes, J-U-S-T-I-N-L-O-W-N-D-E-S. I live at 1334 South 35th Avenue. I'm a parent of two kids. One starts kindergarten this year. So excited for her to be in person. And I'm excited for this body to vote in favor of masks so that she can be in person safely. And I want all kindergartners to have that opportunity. My children are not yet eligible for the vaccine. We know for a fact that masks dramatically reduce the spread of the disease, of diseases, including COVID. My kids played soccer in masks. They learned science in masks. And they rode in cars with friends with masks. And they did this not to protect themselves, but mostly to protect those around them from anything that they might have. I try to be consistent, and I try to teach them to care for others. And they know why it's important, and they comply. They never complain. This board looks to science and data to make informed decisions. Thank you. Your vote in favor of requiring face coverings will confirm that. I look forward to a safe return to school.
Next, we have Jenny Heineman.
Good evening. Hello. My name is Dr. Jenny Heineman, J-E-N-N-Y-H-E-I-N-E-M-A-N, 3528 North 59th Street. I am mother to a seven-year-old child who is in the OPS school system and who is, of course, too young to be vaccinated. And I just want to first comment on what a brilliant microcosm this room is because you, the board, voted to reduce the amount of time that each of us could speak so that everyone gets a chance to speak tonight. That's truly the issue up for debate here tonight. Are we, as a community, willing to sacrifice just a modicum of our own comfort so that everyone can enjoy the things that we do? Everyone still gets to speak tonight? You just don't get to monopolize the time because you live in a society where other people live. This is true of public health as well. I am here today to ask that the school board vote in favor of mandating masks inside Omaha Public Schools. And I would like to briefly talk about individual liberties. We hear a lot about individual liberties these days, and why protecting public health necessarily means protecting individual liberties. As a queer woman, I am perhaps paradoxically in agreement with the socially conservative mindset that the government should be small. I don't want the government in my bedroom. I don't want the government telling me who I can and cannot love. This is not antithetical to protecting public health. Having individual liberties and small government is not antithetical to public health. Indeed, I would argue that a governor threatening to take away public money lest we all go maskless for the sake of his own political agenda is the very definition of big government. So let me give you this rather simple example about the connection between individual liberties and public health. If you have a public wherein four million people are sick, so sick that they can't make decisions for themselves or care for themselves at all, that means that four million people in your global community do not have individual liberties. In order to have individual liberties, you have to have a healthy public. And in order to have a healthy public, you have to have a mask mandate. You have to control this global pandemic, a virus that is as contagious as the chickenpox. Your kid might not like it.
Thirty seconds.
None of us like it. It's hot. It's uncomfortable. I have lots of zits. Okay, none of us like it. But I don't have to privilege discomfort, your discomfort, over my child's life? And so I will leave you with this quote from the Bible. "Let each of you look not only to his own interests, but also to the interests of others." Thank you.
Next, we have Marnie Hodgen.
Good evening. Hello. Good evening. My name is Marnie, M-A-R-N-I, Hodgen, H-O-D-G-E-N. I live at 14101 Butler Avenue. Here I have, and I would like to pass these out afterwards if I may, 47 studies confirming that masks are useless in preventing COVID infection and transmission, especially on children who are almost at zero risk of COVID. The study that I want to focus on tonight shares the scientific findings from neurologist Dr. Marguerite Greisbrissen. And this is what she has to say about masks and their effects on our brains. "The rebreathing of our exhaled air will without a doubt create oxygen deficiency and a flooding of carbon dioxide. We know the human brain is very sensitive to oxygen deprivation. The acute warning symptoms are headaches, dizziness, dizziness, decreased concentration, slowing of the reaction time, all reactions of the cognitive system. However, when you have chronic oxygen deprivation, all those symptoms disappear because you get used to it, but your efficiency will remain impaired, and the undersupply of oxygen in your brain continues to progress. The second problem with chronic oxygen deprivation is that the nerve cells in your brain are unable to divide themselves with less oxygen. The lost nerve cells will no longer be regenerated. What is gone is gone. A child's brain is incredibly active, thirsting for oxygen. The more metabolically active the organ is, the more oxygen it requires. In children and adolescents, every organ is metabolically active. So to deprive a child's or an adolescent's brain of oxygen or restrict it in any way is not only dangerous to their health, it is criminal. It is child abuse. Oxygen deficiency inhibits the development of the brain, and the damage that has taken place cannot be reversed." End quote. This is science. I want to know why you're wanting to put kids back in masks when we know masks can do more harm than good. We still don't have one scientific study validating the use and efficiency of a mask. So not only is
One minute.
it psychologically and socially and physiologically damaging, I also want to ask, do you remember the FOI emails from Dr. Fauci where he writes himself that masks do nothing to protect against the virus? I urge you to allow parental choice. Parents with the mask issue, I encourage you. If you don't want your child in a mask, don't send them to school in one. Put the ball back in your court yourself because these are your kids.
Thirty seconds.
And just a little encouragement, if you don't feel comfortable with that, you don't like what's happening with the proposed health standards, pull your kids out of public school. Look into private or Christian schools or homeschool. Omaha has a very great homeschool community with many parents willing to help you point in the right direction for filing exemptions, curriculum questions, and social opportunities every week. The game stops when we decide we're not playing it anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Rachel Herman. Good evening. Just one second, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Certainly. My name is Rachel Herman, R-A-C-H-A-E-L-H-E-R-M-A-N, address of 4851 Underwood Avenue. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to the children being forced to mask in school. Quite simply, you are not the parents. We are. And you deciding that our kids must cover their airway for up to seven hours a day is an overstep of your authority. Masking should be left up to the parents and what they think is appropriate for their child. This decision should not be yours. It should be a choice of we, the parents. Thank you.
Next, we have Mindy Gilmore.
Good evening. Mindy Gilmore, M-I-N-D-Y-G-I-L-M-O-R-E. I'm at 4027 Burt Street. I came here tonight at the last minute. I didn't prepare speech. I just want to say that all of the studies that were quoted just a little while ago have been debunked prior to this meeting, and they've been studies and studies and studies done on masks. I mean, why do you think surgeons wear masks for hours and hours and hours in surgery? If it shortened their ability to breathe, you wouldn't want them performing surgery on you. And I have a 12-year-old who's starting junior high, who was one of the first in line to get vaccinated just as soon as it was available. And I want her to wear a mask because her safety and everyone who isn't vaccinated's safety is on my mind tonight, not just my own child's preference, you know? Sure, they're uncomfortable, but I would rather wear a mask than not. I had COVID. I know it's horrible. One of my favorite people in the world got it before me, is still suffering almost a year later. You know, I don't want any kid to have to go through that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next, we have Elizabeth Constance. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Dr. Elizabeth Constance. It's E-L-I-Z-A-B-E-T-H-C-O-N-S-T-A-N-C-E. I'm at 302 South 69th Street. I'm the mother of a rising second grader at Washington University... Washington University. Maybe someday. Right now, he's at Washington Elementary. I'm also a physician here in the community and obviously here to support the resolution requiring masking in schools. My seven-year-old son has spent more time not in school since starting kindergarten than he has spent in school. And we have got to get our kids back in school safely and healthily. And the way to do that is with masks. 100% of our elementary school-aged children are not yet eligible for the vaccine, and masks are the only way to protect them right now. This new Delta variant is different. It's changing the game on us again. A year ago, Dr. Logan and the returning members of the board voted to require masks in school. At that time, the strain of COVID that we were dealing with had a 1 to 2 infection rate, which meant every infected person would infect two other people. This Delta variant is as infectious as chickenpox. It's much more infectious than the strains we had a year ago with a mask mandate, meaning the infection rate of this one is 1 in 8. So every one infected person is going to infect eight people around them. My son is lucky enough to be in a small classroom of nine children. So that's an entire class if one student unknowingly brings it to school. So, you know, there's been a lot of talk about, you know, data and experts. You know, I'm not a public health expert. Most of you are not public health experts. And so when I don't know something, I rely on the people who are the experts. And in this case, that's the Center for Disease Control and the American Academy of Pediatrics, which have both come out with very strong statements recommending the use of masks in all children K through 12 to help protect them. So thank you so much for your consideration.
Next, we have Cindy Frazier.
Good evening. Good evening. Dr. Cindy Frazier, C-I-N-D-Y-F-R-A-Z-I-E-R, 105 North 54th Street, 68132. The coronavirus state of emergency ended in Nebraska on June 30th, 2021, at 23:59. The expectation from the governor states that all schools in Nebraska returned to in-person instruction in the fall will not require anyone, even if unvaccinated, to wear masks and will not mandate the vaccine at all. This is an experimental vaccine, and it has only been authorized for emergency use only. The CDC and Public Health Department suggest recommendations. Recommendations are not mandates, and they are also not the law. Until a public health emergency is declared and directed health measures are enacted by the governor, there is no legality to mandating my children, which I have three in the OPS system, that his or her face be covered. Thank you for your attention and understanding of this very important matter while we, as parents, protect our children's health and constitutional rights. Thank you.
Next, we have Richard Clark. Next we have Richard Clark.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Richard Clark, R-I-C-H-A-R-D-C-L-A-R-K, thirty twenty North Forty-Ninth Avenue, six eight one oh four. I want to thank the board for this opportunity to speak. I am a parent of an OPS high school student. This will be his first year in OPS and his first year in high school. And I do support the mask mandate. I just ask that there be some clarification. And that clarification is regarding the music programs for OPS, especially instrumental. I know with vocal that they can still sing with their masks on and be safe. But what is OPS going to be doing regarding the instrumental programs? Especially marching band within the high schools, pep band for basketball, volleyball, football, the concert bands, jazz bands, concerts, all of that. I am concerned that it would decimate the music programs for the students of learning for, for this year. And I, I just would like the board to have clarification on how they will address the instrumental music program. As you know, music is a second, a second language. And it is something that so many students enjoy. And it is something that works for them where they may not feel welcomed in other areas. And I just hope that with this mandate, the way it reads right now is just that flat-out mask. There's nothing addressing other areas of how it will be done. And all I ask is that the board make modifications to the mandate explaining how they will address the instrumental music program. I thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
I'd like to thank you all for joining us tonight, sharing your thoughts and concerns about tonight's mask discussion. Moving on now to New and Miscellaneous Business, action item D one A, resolution twenty-one dash zero one five, recommending face coverings to preserve, to preserve public health and protect the district's students, employees, families, and visitors. Any discussion colleagues?
Ms. Snipes?
Um, maybe we could just address maybe a little bit about what the gentleman talked about with the music program or any sort of like religious freedom, things like that have come up since I was just on my way here. Just wondering if we could just, for transparency, so people understand.
Yes, so first and foremost, we worked with school leaders and sent them guidance regarding specifically band, strings, vocal music. I actually spoke with the supervisor of music today and she had some questions about swing choir. We are getting back to what we would consider normal education, but ensuring that we follow directed measures. When kids are within six feet, we are requiring face coverings. We also know that when it comes to outdoor physical fitness activities or marching band athletics, that you will not have to wear your face covering while outside. And that's all from the CDC, Douglas County Health Department, and American Pediatrics.
Any other questions, Ms. Snipes?
People inquiring about religious freedoms.
I'm sorry, what was?
People inquiring about religious freedoms and masks, if you could maybe speak to that.
Yes, we obviously work when it comes to physicians' notes or other special accommodations. Our whole goal is to work with every student. If there's a special request, you know, particularly from a physician, that we would implement directed health measures, provide accommodations to support those students as we always have. For example, if a student happens to break their leg and they come back, they're going to need special accommodations around that, that doctor's note. But we also take into consideration the safety and well-being of all students. Last year, we did have some accommodations that we needed to follow according to a physician's statement. And in every situation worked out, we worked with the family, the school, and all other stakeholders within the school to ensure that everybody was safe and able to focus on their education.
I appreciate that. And I just asked those questions because there is a lot that goes on behind the scenes that people aren't aware of. And so I just wanted that for some transparency, so people know that, you know, they can reach out and have these discussions with the district. Thank you.
Ms. Cassidy?
Thank you, President, Dr. Holman. Some of you have already mentioned that, well, first of all, let me, let me, let me start again. I want to first of all thank all of you that are here tonight. Let me start with that. This is a tough issue for everyone. You've all alluded to the fact that this has been very difficult for our board, for our city, for our nation. This is a global pandemic. We are not alone in this. I want to thank all of you that reached out via email. I got to the point where I just could not respond anymore. There were so many emails. It was, I know I echo that for my entire board. It, it was difficult to keep up. So for myself, I want to at least thank everyone that emailed, whether you were for or against this. You took the time to email. You took the time to come tonight. That is our democracy right there. You have every right to come here and make any speech that, you know, for or against, and, and we appreciate that. So. This issue for me, I have three children in this district. I have elementary, middle school, and high schoolers, so I have different points of view. I can tell you though, that I don't think there's a kid out there that loves the mask. I don't think there's an adult out there that loves this mask. This is a pandemic. None of us are enjoying any of this. But if I went home and asked right now if my kids want to wear a mask to school, I'd probably get two out of three that would say they'll wear it and the other one would say, I don't want to. But this is not about me. This is not about my kids only. As a board, we sit here and we have to take care of fifty-four thousand kids. They are all of our kids. I don't have three. I have fifty-four thousand. I have, what, nine, eight thousand, nine thousand staff members? I'm not even sure what our number is. It's a lot of people. That number two up there is our priority for a reason. We have to worry about our staff. We have to worry about our children. This is not about us. This is not about what we like and what we don't like. And for that reason, I am going to vote for this resolution because there's too many unknowns with this virus. There are too many ways that this can go. We have had to change how we do things on this board this entire time of COVID. We've had a guidance come out and then two weeks later it has changed and we have had to flip on a dime and go with what the CDC is saying because things have changed so rapidly throughout this pandemic. So we have to plan for the fact that this Delta variant is now, it's in our realm. Yes, the mask mandate ended June thirtieth. Yes, things looked really positive. I was looking so forward to going back to school and not having my kids wear a mask and be able to enter my children's buildings again, but it didn't happen. We have an issue in this country with a variant and it is real. And until we can get a handle on it, I think this is the best possible solution that we can do in our community to try to get our kids back in school and keep them there. Because I know I personally do not want to see these kids go back to remote. We had numerous people talk about the mental well-being. I saw it in my own house. It's real. So I'm going to vote yes for this mask mandate. And I know that I do appreciate though people that I understand choice and I understand wanting to be able to choose for your children. But I think in this instance, at least for me, I have to think about more than my own children. I have to think about the safety of all these kids in this district. Thank you.
Ms. Crackey?
When Lisa was up here speaking, I too assured all those people that wrote today. And I, I agree with how it's got to be the point where I actually just left the computer and I went to bed for fifteen minutes. It was like I had to crash because it was one thing after another. And I tried to answer many of them, but then there were so many of them I couldn't answer. But I am, I assured them that the district would work on, with them, with the special ed children that have the plastic masks and other things, that they would be helping. And I know that she will address all that with all those people. So I've already promised them, not you specifically, but that the district would be working with them. And I too feel, as other board members may be feeling today, just, it's a lot. You know, we've been through a lot this year. Not, not, oh, poor me. It's just a fact. This is the way this year has been. And then this is one more thing. So please, don't give us anything else after this that we cannot get through easily. But thank you for coming and I know everyone has a different opinion. I heard a lot of them today at two other meetings where I was. But I have to hope that we will do the right thing and help our children. I just don't want anyone, I don't want anything bad to happen to any of our students. And if I didn't support the mandate, I would feel guilty if something happened and they were in attendance at school. And I don't want to carry that with me.
Thank you. Mr. Snow?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. This past Thursday, my, my mom watches two little kids. And the grandmother that has custody of them, she passed away. She was fifty years old. On August thirteenth, she would have turned fifty-one. And she passed away, complications of COVID. And when I was talking to my mother, she explained to me that her friend Alyssa Brooks was afraid of getting the vaccine because she heard rumors that people were dying of the vaccine. And when we make decisions out of fear or just interest, we don't really understand sometimes how much that affects everyone around us that we love, the kids that depend on us. And tonight, our board, I hope, and I'm a hundred percent certain that we will pass this resolution to support not just the sixty-plus thousand individuals that come to our doors. These are staff, students, but their families at home in the communities that they live in, which is the greater Omaha area. If you are against that, you have that right. You can send your kid anywhere else. But I do not. I question, Barbara just asked, that you do not make decisions for your child that will impact their health and safety when you are not the doctor, you're not the expert in that. Because that decision will be with your child for the rest of their life. For an individual that caught chickenpox twice, it is possible. There are some kids out there that you don't know that are very, have weak immune systems and you, if you don't take them to the doctor and things like that. So I just want you all to just think about individuals, not just in Omaha or in the people that you know, but just think about the entire country. There are people out there that are still dying of this. And we should all take it seriously. Because the kids today will, one day will be adults and they will judge us for the things that we say at this podium. Thank you.
Mr. Telem?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. We are not public health experts. We have to rely on the professionals charged with guiding us on the medical risks of COVID and importantly, the public health implications of the decisions that we make. We have to weigh those implications against all the other consequences of our decisions, including the desires of our constituents. For the last six months, my child has been in speech therapy. I can't tell you definitively, but I heavily suspect it's because during a formative time of her development, she's been wearing a mask. There are many issues like this that require us to take careful consideration before we make these kinds of decisions. Which is why this board voted unanimously in June to lift the restriction. As we sit here today, the situation has changed. Public health experts have given us very clear recommendations that schools should require masks. We'll continue to evaluate the situation, but today I'll support the resolution.
Ms. Erdenberger?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. I move to approve Resolution Twenty-one dash zero fifteen regarding face coverings to preserve public health and to protect the district's students, employees, families, and visitors.
So moved?
Second.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. There is a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Head?
Yeah, thank you, President, Dr. Holman. And I, I appreciate everyone being here today. I appreciate the comments from everyone else on the board. I, I've got a few comments myself and then a few questions about the, the resolution as well. So I guess I might approach this from a different angle than, than my colleagues here. And I, I think that's okay. I don't think there's necessarily a right or a wrong answer here. I think we all need to weigh the pros and the cons and come to our own decision, whatever that may be. But I, I generally approach issues trusting my fellow man to make the right decision, whatever that may be. You know, that being said, I also fully trust the doctors. You know, I'm not a medical expert. I trust their expertise. You know, I, I grew up, I was diagnosed with asthma at seven months old. And I spent through elementary school, spending two days a week, every week at Midlands, getting, you know, getting breathing treatments until we were able to get an at-home nebulizer. So I, I fully trust and respect the medical experts. But I also look at, look at that as one piece of the puzzle. And, you know, with, with every drug that we get, with every, you know, everything that, that a doctor prescribes us with, there's all, there's always side effects. And so what could those side effects be? Are there potential legitimate educational losses that students might suffer because of this? Like the gentleman earlier who, who brought up the band program. You know, are we, are we going to have students that, that want to go into music that are, that are not able to do that? You know, I think of, my wife works with students with IEPs in, in two of our elementary schools. And in order to do her job, she needs to be able to see the student's mouth to, to work with them on speech issues. And so I, I have been suffering with, and I, I'll be honest, I've been on every single side of this issue, probably multiple times. You know, trying to figure out how personally I can, I can weigh the pros and the cons. So I guess, assuming that we're going to pass this, I've got a few questions, if it's okay, just about, you know, what, what, you know, some of the phrasing in the resolution means. I think if we're going to be, you know, asking our teachers to police their classrooms and the schools and trusting them to, to enforce this, I think we all should probably have a concrete understanding and a uniform understanding of what we're, what we're asking them to do. So is, is that all right if I ask some questions? Perfect. All right, so in section A of the resolution, let's see. "We require district or anyone to wear a face covering to include the nose and mouth made of any cloth or other material reasonably designed to inhibit, filter, or restrict the breath, sneeze, cough, or exhaling from one's nose or mouth." The way I read that, that only, or that, that requires masks, face coverings, that's not face shields, is that?
It does, excuse me, it is not face shields, but we do have some students who need to read lips. And as we did last year with the same students, we had the teacher and the student wear a face shield. And that way they were able to see the, the, able to read lips and, and move about accordingly so that the student could continue learning.
Okay.
And the same, in the instance of bands, because we had, we were in school last year, very similarly, there are some additional items that we purchase to make sure that some of the instruments don't spew because obviously you're blowing into instruments. And so there are lots of things, a lot of innovation that's Um, and so there are lots of things, a lot of innovation, um, that's been used around the world, um, so that, uh, these music programs can continue. You know, you can go see a concert now with, and, um, there are accommodations that, um, folks are able to make. Uh, with the case of marching band, marching band is outside, so it's less, obviously, uh, quite a bit, um, quite, uh, less risky. In the choir rooms, which are pretty large, students are, they are able to, to typically space students, students do sing through masks. I think we had a presentation here with, um, students, uh, singing, uh, through their masks, but also when they're able to space, they're able to do that. At the, um, at our musical that we had, that is actually held outdoors, students actually wore masks at that musical, um, um, that were actually, they designed to make them look like part of the costume. So, uh, the, um, there was quite a bit of innovation by our, uh, teachers to make sure that those activities, uh, could, could continue. We don't have, you know, as I, uh, we spoke with principals on Friday to let them know that this resolution was going to be posted. Um, and as we talked about that, the thing that we shared was, we are going to keep moving. We all agree that we have, we do have to learn to live with the virus, and part of living with it is using the face covering so that we can keep moving. Uh, nobody wants to stop moving. Uh, nobody loves wearing the face covering, but, um, those are, those are some of the questions that I, um, hear underneath, uh, what you asked, to make sure that I got those out and to respond to the constituent who, um, uh, was concerned about, um, their child, um, being able to fully participate in music programs.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I know we had this conversation Friday as well. And so I guess I'll, I'll skip down then. The next question I had, um, or one of the next questions anyway, is, uh, number three under subsection A, it's, uh, exempts persons when doing so creates a greater health, safety, or security risk to the individual or the public. Um, so I get, how are we defining health, safety, and security risk? Is health a doctor's note? Is health, they have an IEP or a, an issue that we understand? Or is health, you know, a student who might have an anxiety attack and just needs to go to the corner and take a breath?
No, it's actually not the latter. Um, it's the former. So we have many students, so for example, a JP Lord, none of the students there wear a mask because of their disabilities. Um, and so when a student needs to be able to remove their own mask, and so that typically is one of the bars that we use. Uh, we have some students who are in, um, our ACP classrooms that also similarly cannot do that, but, um, like similar to last year, we have some students that cannot remove their own mask, that is a requirement, and those students, um, are not required, um, to wear, to wear a mask. All the staff around them is masked, particularly a JP Lord with the, um, uh, critical nature of some of the health concerns that we have there. We actually had extra, we had some, uh, upgraded masking in addition to, um, weekly testing, even after we, those staff members were afforded the vaccine as early as January, um, and we, their first vaccine as early as January, um, and we still continued with, um, our, uh, weekly testing, um, after that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then the, uh, number above that, uh, students are exempted when they're alone or with household members in separate, single spaces. So does that, is that, you know, in their own room, or is it separated by a cubicle? Or how, how are we determining?
I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, is that, is that a proposed?
No, no, that's the, the second exemption is, uh, persons who are alone or with household members in a separate, single space.
So people that are in their offices, teachers when they're in their classroom and they're on planning can ta, I'm sorry, I thought you said students, um, he said persons, but, um, teachers when they're in their classroom, um, uh, by themselves or with their household members. So you have teachers who have their own children in their school, um, they are certainly are able to take their, to take their, um, mask off when they're in the classroom by themselves. We don't require them to wear them during their planning period.
Okay, perfect, and, um...
And staff members who are in offices, you know, have, close the door and are able to take their mask off.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, persons when eating and drinking, are we, I flew Delta Airlines last, last week, and, uh, they were very vigilant about, you know, make sure to put your mask up, you know, the, the second you're done taking a sip of water. So are, are we going to be, you know, put your mask back up between bites, or is it, you know, take it off when you sit down and put it back on when you stand up?
You take it off while you're eating, um, and then you put it back on when you're finished eating.
So is that in, in the process of chewing, do you, do you put it back on then?
Um, Mr. Head, I mean, I really trust our school administrators to understand if a kid is eating a peanut butter and jelly sandwich, that they wouldn't necessarily, uh, take a bite and then put it back on, and then take a bite and put it back on. Uh, they, and I have, I was in several schools and participated in lunch. Students sat there, uh, ate their lunch, and then when lunch was, when they finished eating, then they put their mask back on. I, I probably was in, I don't know, 25 schools and witnessed lunch, uh, last year, and that's what I witnessed in elementary, in middle, and in high school.
Okay, yeah, and I, I trust our administrators and our teachers too. I just want to make sure that we have a uniform understanding so that we don't have one school saying it's this and one school saying it's...
They have very specific guidance that was given by Ms. Utterback's, uh, office, um, that they received about almost two weeks ago, at least 10 days, about 10 days ago.
Okay. Um, and then how does, how does this resolution tie into the student code of conduct as far as discipline goes?
So one of the things that we have tried to do is not to, um, use the code of conduct. Um, we have tried to use a teaching method in terms of things moving forward. Now, children who are insubordinate for, in other ways, because there's, there is always a line of insubordination, um, that's a whole nother story. But in terms of, um, wearing the mask, we've used a teaching method. We talked about that right at the beginning when we were, when we were having our children, uh, return to school, that we did not want to use punitive measures. Um, again, insubordination is a whole nother thing, so I want to make sure I'm real clear on that, uh, because defying what, you know, your, um, what your, uh, what is expected is, is different from, uh, a teaching method and a child making an honest mistake or, um, having a misunderstanding. So I want to make sure I'm, I'm really clear on that.
Oh, I, I appreciate that. So I, I think we had a speaker earlier tonight say that their student was, uh, you know, sent to a remote school last year for refusing to wear a mask. So just say worst-case scenario, we have a, a student who refuses to put it on, is, does that look like, you know, they're going to go to the principal's office? Is that a suspension as, as case-by-case basis?
I think that, um, I trust our school administrators to, um, care, uh, for their, for their young people, and, um, that was, um, uh, you know, if that situation occurred, uh, that is something that we would have to deal with individually. I can't speak to it because I, I'm not familiar with it. Um, but, um, for the most part, the, um, we didn't have issues with our young people. Obviously, we had some issue on school buses, um, children have a little bit less supervision, um, and they are children. Um, you know, we've had the same with adults, um, to be honest, and, um, so I, it would be on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, I appreciate that. Are masks tied to the, uh, the dress code at all?
We haven't tied them to the dress code. Um, we did, um, add some things into our code, but we have mostly used this as a public health issue, um, using the board resolution for, um, uh, for support, for, um, sharing with our families and with our young people, that this is a requirement for the health and safety, um, of our community, of our school communities.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, you know, thinking, I've seen people with masks with all kinds of different, you know, fun, exciting, sometimes not very appropriate things written on them, and so, you know, I, I would imagine that if a student comes with a, with a mask that, you know, has a curse word or something, we're probably going to switch it out with.
Let's, let's hope so.
All right, um, and then go, going back to our conversation last Friday and, and a little bit ago about, uh, special services students, and I know you said that, um, you know, we already work with those students and provide a face shield for the, the student and the teacher in those situations, um, but that's not an exemption written in here. So I, I, I don't want to see us passing a policy and then the first thing we do as a district is encourage our staff to violate it.
We did not, Mr. Head, we did not have that issue. I mean, it's almost identical to the, uh, the resolution that we had last year, and we just really, that just was not, um, an issue for us. Um, our staff, um, did an amazing job, as well as our young people, in, uh, making sure that they had their facial coverings on. Um, you know, some children do better, and adults do better with making sure it's covering their nose and their mouth. Um, you know, uh, but just generally, our staff, uh, and our students really did a remarkable job. Um, uh, you know, our little, our littles especially, um, were really, um, compliant with, um, making sure that they were covered, um, faces were covered. Um, they don't have to, dissimilar to last year, the beginning of the school year last year at recess, they had to still keep them on. They don't have to keep them on this year. Um, we are hopeful that we will, at some point, uh, um, not have to wear them. We will continue to, um, we talk to public health officials daily, sometimes more than once daily, um, and, uh, communicate with them regularly and are monitoring, um, all the conditions. We didn't think we were going to get here, we were hopeful that we didn't get here, but alas, here we are today, um, considering this, um, one week from the start of school.
Okay, no, and I, I, I appreciate that, and I, you know, hearing from, speaking with teachers and principals, especially last year, you know, I know at the, the elementary schools, I was worried that kids weren't going to like wearing the masks, and every single principal that I talked with said, "No, the kids are great." And I mean, even looking at my kids, my five-year-old loves wearing her mask, you know, she has a, she has one for every little, every single Disney princess, and she, you know, swishes it around every day of the week. So I, I, I get that, but I, I'm just reading the, the text of the resolution. If we're saying you can't wear a face shield, but then we're telling teachers that it's okay in these situations to wear a face shield, should we make that a specific exemption?
Well, I think that, um, the latitude for administration to make sure that we can, um, enact the policy as we did last year, uh, seemed to work for us, um, well. And, um, you know, I don't, I, you know, I, we do not expect, um, that that would be, um, an issue moving forward. We, um, you know, our, everybody wants the children to be in school, um, and is aware that, um, that perhaps this is the way to move forward, um, you know, should the board, um, decide that they're going to, um, approve the resolution and move forward. Um, we, we, uh, the language of the resolution wasn't, was not something that was an issue for us, um, uh, last year. So I'm just, you know, speaking on, we had, uh, 10 months of experience, so it was helpful to include summer, to, to include summer programming, um, so.
Yeah, no, I, I...
That's for the board's consideration. Um, thank you.
So, yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. And with that, I'd like to introduce an amendment, Madam President, if that's okay. Um, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to include exemption, new exemption six. I was reading, "Students whose IEP or Section 504 plans provide otherwise." So that would just allow for, um, specifically allow within the policy for the, you know, situations like Dr. Logan just mentioned to specifically be covered. Personally, I look at that as giving the administration more latitude to actually follow, you know, follow the policy. I think before, without this amendment, you know, we're, we're borderline violating our own resolution, so.
Thank you, Mr. Head. There's a motion on the floor to include the amendment, "Students whose IEP or Section 504 plans provide otherwise." Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a section, second. Any further discussion? Mr. Snow?
Thank you. Um, Michael, Mr. Head, uh, did, uh, sorry, did you work with, uh, legal or the clarification on that? Yes. Okay, uh, just want to make sure that we cross all our Ts and dotted our Is. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Teal?
Thank you, Dr. Holman. Thank you, Dr. Holman. So, yeah. Dr. Logan, if we were not to pass this amendment, um, would it be possible for you to keep us abreast of exceptions like this as they come up? Not on an individual basis, but sort of a categorically?
Yes, I actually could probably tell you who they were for last year, so, um, we have those. Um, we, we had one, we had one point of approval, so that we did not have multiple points of approval across the district. So that was a concern of ours when this, um, when we initiated it, that if we have 90 folks deciding, it could be problematic. So we, um, made sure that we had one point of contact is actually, um, our special education director. Um, she works with a couple of other folks to make sure, with our, um, uh, health director, uh, Ms. Lori Boda, um, and with Ms. Lisa Utterback, to make sure that we have, uh, consistency across the district on how that occurs. And I will share with you, we did not have many folks who were asking for these accommodations. We had people who could have asked for, who did not even ask for these accommodations.
Thank you.
Happy to do that.
Any further discussion with the amended motion on the floor? Mr. Snow?
With that, Dr. Logan, um, I can't remember the amount of students we actually had in person come with the previous resolution to this one. How many students did we have in person at that time?
Um, last year we had 42,000 students in person.
Okay. Thank you.
Roll call, Mr. Ray.
Cracky.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Teal.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdenberger.
Aye.
Head.
Aye.
Holman.
Aye.
Nine, aye.
Motion carries.
I, I've got a couple other questions if I, if it's all right, if I can continue.
Mr. Head?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so stay, staying on the same topic, I know we, Dr. Logan, we'd also talked about students who might be deaf or hard of hearing and need to, uh, read lips. I know it's kind of under the same, you know, the, the same, um, boat as the, the students with IEPs where, you know, in last year, we had allowed, uh, allowed for the use of face masks or face shields in those, uh, in those classrooms to, you know, allow for those students to not suffer a learning loss. So I think, you know, kind of like we just did with students with IEPs, we should probably pass an amendment to just allow the administration the leeway to actually use shields versus, versus masks.
That is covered in the, what you just approved for the IEPs and the five, any student who's deaf or hard, hard of hearing would either have an IEP or a 504. So you've covered it there.
And there, there's also a big difference between a student who qualifies for an IEP and a student who might just have learning loss. So are we, are we certain that all of those students are, are covered?
For the deaf or hard of hearing students, they would be, either have an IEP or a 504.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, um...
In order, sorry, in order to qualify for the services that they would need, they need to have an individualized education plan.
Yep, yep, yeah, no, and I, I, you know, understand the IEP process. I just also know that there's, you know, some students who probably have some level of, you know, speech impairment or learning loss, but they don't necessarily meet the requirement of, you know, being able to, to have an IEP. So I just want to make sure that we're not leaving students behind.
Ms. Utterback's going to come up, because we do have a process where parents can apply for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, we have a process where students that are, um, that do not receive a special education, it's called the 504 process, and all elementary, um, middle and high school counselors are the building, um, 504 coordinators. We receive training, obviously, from special education, and when requests come in that are not IEP-related, the counselor would get, as we have in previous years, the 504 team together, um, look at what the, the need is of the student, um, make sure that accommodations are put in place to ensure that that student is successful and safe, as well as his or her, um, fellow classmates and staff members. So that is through the 504 process.
Okay, thank you, I really appreciate that. All right, um, and then I guess just my final comment is, and I, I know that, uh, the very end of the resolution calls for the administration to, you know, work, continue to work with health director or health, uh, experts and monitor the recommendations. And I think, Dr. Logan, you've done a great job of doing that for the past year and a half, really. Um, I, I trust you to continue to do so. I would personally feel more comfortable if we... if we also put a requirement back on the board to readdress this, um, as far as some sort of a sunset. You know, the other school districts seem to be doing 30 days. I know last year, this board seemed to set a, a precedent of doing things tied to the academic quarter. So, I, I don't know what anyone else on the board's appetite would be to, to sunset, um, the mandate, but I'd like to make a motion, just for the, just for the sake of it, um, to add a new section that says, "Be it therefore resolved that in absence of further board action, this resolution shall remain in effect through October 18th, 2021."
Mr. Head, um, I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm gonna interrupt you. I've actually received, um, advice not to do that from, um, the folks that are advising us, um, that, um, setting, uh, because part of this is managing expectations. Um, and, um, their advice has been to continue to, uh, meet with them and then to advise the board, um, as to the health conditions, rather than putting a date, um, or a date certain. Um, because I think that the expectation is, as I update you all weekly, that I continue to give you a weekly update on the health conditions. Um, maybe they'll improve quicker, um, but, um, that the advice has been, uh, not to look at anything that is time-bound, um, from the health professionals on which we depend. What the board decides is, you know, but that, that's the advice that's been given to me.
Any, excuse me, anything else, Mr. Head?
Uh, no, I think I just made the motion.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you got all your thoughts out. Is there a second? Okay. There is no second. And due to the lack of there not being a second, um, we do not, um, that amendment has not passed. Any further discussion before we move on with the vote? We'll take a motion for the resolution.
So moved.
Got it. It's been moved by Mr. Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, I missed who said it, second. And it's the second by Mr. Tealyn? Roll call, Mr. Ray?
Crackey.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Snipes.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Tealyn.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Erdnberger.
Aye.
Head.
No.
Holman.
Aye.
Eight, aye.
Motion passes. Let the record reflect that the Board of Education meeting adjourned at 8:11 PM. Thank you. Yes, thank you.